I'm going to call this meeting of Landale City Council to order. I'm going to ask some Madam City Clerk to please give us the roll call.
Okay. Mayor Protem Hoffman Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, at this time Pastor Jimmy Oriana from Cavalry Chapter of South Bay will lead us in a word of inspiration and Councilwoman Cuevas will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you.
Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first and then we'll have a word of inspiration.
Please stand. Remove your hats if you have one. Right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Thank you so much. Always a privilege to be here with the city of Landale. Let us pray. Dear Lord, you instruct us in your word to pray for those in authority, for kings and those in authority, that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in our godliness and holiness. Lord, tonight we want to pray for the city council here, from the mayor to the council members to everyone that serves this city in any capacity God. Would you go before them every step of the way tonight as they meet and talk about business that entails the city of Landale? Lord, I want to pray once again as we pray always for a spirit of unity to fall fresh upon this room. God, that they would know that they're to be one team, Lord, for you've called each and every one of them for such a time as this. Lord, you know there have been many challenges the past couple of years, Lord, and today we want to say thank you for allowing us to get through much and thank you once again for allowing us to be here tonight in person. And Lord, we ask that at the end of tonight, had each member, from the mayor to the council members, everyone goes home, they would look back and know that much was accomplished. But Lord, once again, we give you the agenda that needs to be gone over tonight, you know the Ts that need to be crossed, the Is that need to be dotted. We ask that you would go before us. Thank you once again for this time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Oriana for those words of inspiration. Okay, let's hear from our Captain Allen for the public safety report. Welcome sir. Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report from March 8th through March 21st. On March 9th at approximately 9:40 a.m., Deputy Poole responded to a burglary in progress at a residential location in the 4600 block of Marine Avenue. A male adult was located exiting the rear door of the property at which time he was detained by assisting deputies. After investigation, it was determined the male had kicked in the front door of the residence. The suspect admitted he knew the homeowner was not at home but just wanted to take a shower. The homeowner concluded that nothing was taken from his home. The suspect was arrested for felony residential burglary. Also on March 9th at approximately 11:30 a.m., Deputy Hillard, who works at Landale High School as a school resource officer, responded to the upper break area during lunch for a large student fight. With the assistance of school security, surveillance footage, and Deputy Hillard's knowledge of the students on campus, he was able to identify five students who had assaulted one student by kicking and punching him in the head. All five students were expelled from school and arrested for felony assault with a daily weapon. On March 15th at about 12:30 a.m., Deputy Rosales conducted a traffic stop of a vehicle for vehicle code violations near Marine and Prairie Avenue. The vehicle was occupied by three adults, one male and two females. Deputy Rosales recovered methamphetamine and a loaded firearm, which was a ghost gun. All three suspects were arrested for possession of a controlled substance while in possession of a firearm. During the last city council meeting, you inquired about stolen catalytic converters. I've given you two maps displaying all the stolen catalytic converters in 2021. The first map is actually mistyped, so it's actually all the 2021, and then the second one is for year-to-date 2022. There was a total of 49 stolen with another 13 damaged in 2022. We currently have six and it looks like we have an addition since the 9th of this month, it looks like we have an additional six since the 9th. Due to high amount of thefts, I was asked ways to prevent catalytic converter thefts. Thank you. Just so you know, catalytic converter thefts is on the rise nationwide. Thieves can steal this anti-pollution device in a matter of minutes and sell it to scrap metal dealers for several hundred dollars for the precious metals it contains. Insurance giant State Farm says it handled three times as many catalytic converter theft claims in 2021 as it did in 2020, and more than 10 times as many in 2019. A replacement for a stolen catalytic converter can cost as much as $3,000. Such a theft is a crime of opportunity, so removing the easy opening will cause these cat burglars to move on to easier prey. That being said, I want to give you some of the top tips from mechanics and law enforcement agencies, including our own, to avoid this experience of having your catalytic converter stolen and its costly repair. There's five main ones. First of all, know if your car is a target of catalytic converter theft. Currently Ford trucks, Honda Element, and Jeep Cherokees are some of the top vehicles that are stolen, and the number one is the Prius. The Prius is the number one for catalytic converter thefts as it's an ultra-low emission vehicle. The Prius has a catalytic converter that contains more of the, I hope I say this right, rhodium, palladium, and platinum that renders it harmless. So that's why they're your number one car, and it's also the number one car that I've seen in Landale that have had its catalytic converter taken. Trucks and SUVs are often hit by thieves also because it's easy to slide underneath a vehicle rather than jack up the car. Sometimes thieves will unbolt the catalytic converter, but more often they just cut the connecting pipes using a battery-operated saw. You can install an anti-theft device on your catalytic converter. Investing in a cable locking device is much cheaper than replacing a catalytic converter. The internet is filled with such devices to protect your catalytic converter, which is part of the exhaust system that runs along the bottom of your car. The anti-theft device installed ranges from $250 to $800. A few of the popular devices are a steel shield that fits over the catalytic converter, requiring time and extra tools to remove. Cages made of rebar or other high-strength steel that's difficult to cut can also be installed. And then also there are stainless steel cables wielded from the catalytic converter to the car's frame. Some motor shops will custom wield such a device to your car, attaching the catalytic converter directly to the car's frame, but it can be noisy since the exhaust system otherwise is suspended from the car by sound buffering hangers. Number three, you can paint your catalytic converter. Some sources recommend using a high-temperature fluorescent orange paint such as those sprayed on barbecue grills on your catalytic converter, and then inscribing your vehicle identification number in the paint surface. This makes it traceable, and in theory at least, a reputable scrap metal dealer might decline to buy it. You can set your car's alarm to be a little bit more sensitive, however, if cats or birds jump on it, obviously your alarm might inadvertently go off. But if you make your car more sensitive, you might be able to interrupt thieves from stealing your catalytic converter. Last, you know, check your insurance. If you have comprehensive insurance, comprehensive insurance covers stolen auto parts. If you have full coverage, liability insurance plus collision and comprehensive policies that repair or replace your own car, you're covered minus your deductible amount. It's typically required if you have a loan or lease vehicle, your coverage will also cover that. So if you have a vehicle, that's one of the high-risk or high-stolen vehicles, just ensure that your, you know, you might want to ensure that your insurance is also, will cover that in case of that theft. That's all I have as far as preventative measures, and that's the end of my report. I'll be happy to take any questions from you.
Okay, are there any questions of the captain's public safety report?
I just have a comment. Thank you for such a fine report. I didn't realize that you could paint it and that certain cars were more valuable like the Prius, so I hope that we can do better at getting that information out to our residents to try to keep them safe and get those catalytic converters that are stolen identified in the chop shops that you come across, so.
Oh yeah, no, definitely, and I think that the one that you say about the spray paint is, you know, if thieves see that it's easily identifiable, then they have a tendency to want to go somewhere else. So that, obviously, putting the cages, that's a little bit more expensive, but anything can help. And like I said, Priuses are nationwide, are the biggest cars right now because they got the most value in there. So if you definitely have those, you know, you want to definitely, you know, take some care in trying to prevent these things from getting stolen, for sure.
Well, thank you.
Any additional questions? I just have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
So what is the, in terms of the scrap dealers, so what is the obligation of the scrap dealers in terms of doing their due diligence to make sure they're not receiving stolen goods? I mean, they have to know that it's on the rise, and if all of a sudden, if you was getting maybe one or two, and now you're getting, you know, a windfall of a catalytic converters.
I think that's the difference between a reputable one and a not reputable one, right? So I mean, that's kind of hard to answer, so I think obviously reputable ones are getting their converters from cars that have been crashed and already things of that nature. You know, somebody just walking in off the street with a catalytic converter or two.
Right, right.
It's pretty obvious that it's probably not legit, so, you know, we do do scrap yards, our trap unit does do scrap yard inspections, things of that nature to try to keep them honest. I mean, there are a lot of scrap yards and obviously used car dealerships and just repair shops of the yin yang, so I mean, it's a never-ending rotation. But I mean, to answer your question, I mean, morally, they should, they're obligated to not receive it and even necessarily tell on that person that's coming in, but, you know, they know where to go to. I mean, if we want to be honest, they know which places to go to and which places not to.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that report, Captain.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next item on our agenda, shall we have some items from the City Clerk's Department? Yes, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. We want to take this opportunity to provide a list of important information regarding the vote-by-mail drop boxes for the upcoming April 2022 Assembly District 62 special election. The vote-by-mail period is Monday, March 7th through Election Day, Tuesday, April 5th, 2022. All registered and eligible voters during this election should have received the vote-by-mail ballots starting on March 7th. The vote-by-mail drop boxes opened on Thursday, March 3rd. On Election Day, all drop boxes will be locked at 8:00 p.m. Voters were provided with the drop box locations near their residence on their vote-by-mail packet. For a safe and secure place to drop off your ballot, Landale has a vote-by-mail drop box located at Hogan Park at Osage Avenue and 167th Street. Voters can also find all drop box locations as well as vote centers on the locator tool on lavote.gov. That's capital L, capital A, V-O-T-E dot G-O-V. Ballots will be securely collected daily at each vote-by-mail drop box by Los Angeles County Register, Recorder slash County Clerk staff members throughout the voting period. Voters can track their vote-by-mail ballot every step of the way by subscribing to receive real-time tracking notifications by text, email, or voicemail. Visit wheresmballet.sos.cal.gov, that's W-H-E-R-E-S-M-Y-B-A-L-L-O-T dot S-O-S dot C-A dot G-O-V to get started. Any questions or concerns regarding the vote-by-mail drop boxes, please call 1-800-815-2666, then choose option two. Voters can also email, I'm going to spell it out because it's very long, v-b-m-d-r-o-p-o-f-f, that's v-b-m drop off, at r-r-c-c dot L-A county, L-A-C-O-N-T-Y dot G-O-V. This information is also printed on all of the vote-by-mail drop boxes. And one last note, personal note, just want to encourage everyone to please vote, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Next item on the agenda is oral communications. Oral communications is when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to this body on items not on the agenda, if you would line it by the flag, when it becomes your turn, if you would come to the podium, if you would start with your name, that would help us out. When the amber light comes on, you have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. Let's have the first, I still want to say a minute all the time for some reason.
Gary Adams, 40-plus years residential property in Landale. Comment on the previous comments on the catalytic converter issue. Prevention is the way to go. I agree with that. I would point out for consideration that most people who do have full coverage insurance have a $500 to $1,000 deductible, so unless it's a real late-model car, they probably are not carrying that coverage to begin with. So again, prevention is the way to go. Just a quick update on the RJ issue, RJ's construction materials. There was a tiny bit of progress with rebar being removed from the north property line of the R3 lot facing Manziel. There's still a huge amount of building materials on that same lot that is against the south property line which borders with a commercial lot. There is a block wall which clearly delineates the difference, and yet there's several feet of material that is on the R3 lot which is in violation of code. The two-story high racks, the monstrous racks, I have seen no racks removed. In fact, it appears that increased material is stored on these huge monstrous racks, and my understanding is the outside material is restricted to no more than six foot in height. Every one of these huge racks violates that. Then we come to an item, I don't know whether it's been talked about before, but due to the illegal heavy truck traffic on Manziel going in and out of the residential three lot, the sidewalk is, concrete is broken, cracked, and this is a trip-and-fall hazard. The city is now placed on notice. This should be repaired, it should be paid for by RJ's because they are responsible for it, in my opinion. And I think I've heard other council persons have expressed concern that the city should not be paying for stuff that RJ tears up. So I stand ready to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thank you for your report. Yes, Mayor.
My name is Rose Rodriguez. I'm a Landale resident, and good evening, Mayor Pullen and council members. Okay, thank you for this opportunity to voice my concern regarding the Metro Green Extension Row 1 Condon option. This option exposes Landale residents to serious risk from a deadly gasoline pipeline accident. Metro plans to move the existing train track and add two additional trains. This is mind-boggling when you consider I can't even plant a flower. The new rail system will run six to 10 minutes, 20 hours a day. The more activity you have on that train track, which is not used to any type of activity at all, is another problem, derailments, which I haven't even had the time to Google, okay? Alluring me even more is the knowledge that this project has been exempted from California Environmental Quality Act under SB 288. It will not be constructed under the previous normal environmental safeguards. Landale experienced a huge gas line explosion in December 1952 with deadly consequences. Twelve residents suffered serious burns all over their body, and Mrs. Arredondo and her 14-year-old daughter died from these burns. Twenty years ago, there was a smaller incident without injury in 1932. L.A. Metro Board has put this dangerous option on the fast track to the 2028 Olympics, evidenced by exempting this project from CEQA, again, California Environmental Quality Act. Metro Board members and officials, you are rolling the dice on the safety, health, and life of the schoolchildren nearby at William Green and Environmental Charter and all the residents. How much money does cost-cutting option that they have save Metro? This is all about the money and the time. How much value do you place on the life, health, and safety of each Landale resident? There are 33,000 residents, more or less, in Landale. I tried to figure it out for you. For every $1 million of saving on your budget for this project, it puts a value on my life, $330, on my child's life, $330.
Can we have to spend a little more than vote by $10 million times $3,000?
Go ahead and wrap it up for me. Go ahead and wrap it up for me, Ms. Rodriguez.
Please don't put a price tag on our lives, on the safety, health, and livelihood according to crack, crack, there have been 6,298 incidents, 140 fatalities, 356 injuries from 2010 to 2016.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Two weeks ago, there was another explosion in Silver Lake. Go back to 2010, San Bruno, eight people dead, okay? And also, just by the way, when they did an investigation, they found that it was very closely related between the California public utilities and California Pacific Gas.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hello, council. My name is Ryan Rodriguez. I'm actually here with support, my mother, Rose Rodriguez, who's actually a local celebrity here. She worked in all the schools in William Green for the last, my whole life, she was my teacher. She would put me on timeout in William Green. So I would be at Ralph's and little kids would come up to her and say, "Ms. Rodriguez, you taught my mom and you taught me," and, you know, that's why I'm here partly is because I love this city so much. It's really, truly the heart of the South Bay. You have small communities, a socioeconomic environment that I believe is partly why less people care about the Row C option or have the time, because they're working to pay their bills and raise their children, whereas a city like Redondo Beach, the socio-economics are different, where the people have a lot more money and a lot more time to fight to not have trains and noises that they don't want in their communities. I believe it is the jobs of the political constituents in front of me to fight or at least compromise with the railways that are impacting our communities, what they're seemingly looking like, the Row C option, because obviously the train tracks are already there, and it only makes sense in a business aspect, a financial aspect, to place it where tracks are already laying. Obviously, I believe Robert Pullen Miles at one point said it'd be great for it to go underground, and obviously I'd be a purveyor of that. But really, I just think that the city of Landale is a place where you raise your family, potentially you move to and live a great life, or like me, someone that will come back to Landale at one point and raise a family. And I can definitely foresee a more transient community, a more, less small community that Landale currently is if that train Row C is built, and I would only, you know, urge and, you know, be a part of the assistance in helping you guys fight against the Row C option, and thank you for your time.
Ryan, thank you. You're a grown man now. Haven't seen you in a while. Good to see you. Well, I've been a grown man for 50 years. Thank you, Ryan.
Good evening, Randall Abram. The fireworks discussion at the last council meeting would lead one to believe that the reason most of the council members do not want to place the ballot measure on the agenda is that they fear that the sale of Safe and St. fireworks will be banned. One of the concerns brought up by council members is that if the issue is put on the ballot, it will open the floodgate for residents to have other measures placed on the ballots. The comment made to not baby these people basically denies citizens the right of representation. I don't believe that elected officials should have to be reminded that they chose to serve the people and enact measures that these people deem necessary for good government. As one individual, they are not here to determine ballot measures that may benefit the many. In this case, the Mayor Protem was the one that placed the item on the agenda, as was her job, to represent the citizenry of Landale and allow them to dramatically, democratically make this decision for themselves. An unsupported comment was made that there is no data showing that banning Safe and St. fireworks would have an impact on illegal fireworks. A case of amnesia exists here, as I have discussed and shared the results of a grand jury report that did show those cities with Safe and St. fireworks did have a higher incidence of illegal fireworks. As a resident, at least do the research, and this should be expected of elected officials as well. During the last meeting, a council member suggested that not liking fireworks is unpatriotic. Anyone knowing their history would know that Francis Cottkey wrote the National Anthem, the rockets he referred to as the bombardment of Fort Henry by the British in 1812. Here in 2022, any firework that leaves the ground is illegal. Additionally, personal bias dictating who or what is patriotic is not a road an elected official should go down. The comment was made that legal fireworks were banned in Landale, people would simply go to Hawthorne to buy fireworks. However, Hawthorne at least has enough respect for its residents to allow them to decide the issue on the continuation of Safe and St. fireworks and place it on the November ballot. The cost of replacing, the cost of placing the measure on the ballot was another excuse. How much did Landale pay to simply word the measure that ended up raising taxes for the Landale community? I'm not even going to bring up the $20,000 expenditure in a boondoggle that did not benefit residents. The constant refrain is that this funding will benefit youth groups in Landale, but as evident tonight, nobody's bothered to ensure that this is the case. The only good result from last week's discussion was a commitment to spend at least another $11,000 on fireworks suppression. Let's hope there's not another case of amnesia when the budget rolls around. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment and bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the members. Let's hear from Councilman Pat Kearney.
Well, the metro is, you know, we're all fighting metro still, so it's not a given. And Gary, RJ, maybe we can have code enforcement or even the city manager look into the situation about the, what do you call them? Yeah. The terrorists.
If I can speak on that, Mr. Mayor and council, though the three, the two-story racks are legally non-conforming. They're allowed. It's the other racks where they've added on since we signed them off in October 2019 that they need to reduce down, but those two-story racks are legal non-conforming, they can have them. If the council recalls, we adopted an ordinance to address that back, I think, in '17 on the CM Zone under the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan, and also we required a block wall, solid block walls for outdoor storage.
Okay, that answered my question, so I'll pass it on to my-
And then one other thing, sorry. We also sent the letter, a 45-day letter, to RJ's, letting them know they need to address those issues. We sent a copy of the letter to Mr. Gary Adams as well.
Okay. And with that, I'll pass it on to my colleague, Torey.
Councilwoman Suarez.
Thank you, everybody that came out tonight. Mr. Adams, I think we're going to have to hire you as part of our staff, but thank you for keeping an eye on that. And then with regards to the comments made about the Metro Green Line, I did want to see if possibly our colleagues that sit on the subcommittee can probably give an update. I know, I do agree with the comment that a lot of our constituents are hardworking and I- and I, and just from growing up, but most of the time, your first priority is just working and putting food on the table, so it is kinda hard to keep up with, um, what's going on and, and making sure that we're informing our residents as well. Um, and then the other thing I did wanna bring up with regards to the firework, I, I do think it's a valid point that we, we did say, uh, placing funds for making sure during the fourth that we're, we're following up and making sure people are abiding by the law. So I do think that's a fair comment. Um, and I would pose it to the subcommittee that we make sure that that allocation gets put on the budget. Um, with that, I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman Quavis.
I just would like to thank everybody for speaking, coming out and speaking. Um, this time, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim. Hoffman Gorman.
The first thing I'd like to ask is if we could get Public Works to take a look at the sidewalk that is, Gary brought up, is being broken there around RJ. If that's a trip and fall, I'd sure like that to be handled. Second thing on Metro, to answer your question, in the last meeting, um, a lot was brought up out of my frustration to Metro regarding the way that the, um, tours were conducted and that we need to take a better look the, in the next meetings. I want only invited the Lawndale residents. I want it to be catered to the Lawndale residents and I, not just the people that live and will be affected there at the row or at the Hawthorne Boulevard, but also the north end of town too that are going to be impacted regardless. Um, so that is being talked about, and I did voice frustration over the fact we, we need to do it in Spanish and we need to, um, give some, give a broader idea of when our meetings can take place that are more convenient for them. Um, and again, I'm just going to go ahead and say regardless of it going down the row or Hawthorne Boulevard, I think all of us here, we don't want it, period, regardless of which direction it goes. So the mayor and I are doing our very best to communicate with Metro so that they understand the frustrations that Lawndale or residents are going through on this issue. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I too wanna thank those who spoke tonight. Thank you for coming out and speaking tonight. Um, just to follow up on the, the, um, the C-line, um, just for those who may not be familiar with, um, with the C-line project or, uh, that this is not a project of the city of Lawndale. This is solely a project of Metro. And Metro is a metropolitan planning, um, organization, uh, that provides, um, infrastructure as well as, um, transportation services. They have broad and vast powers and authorities as given to them by the state legislature. Uh, Ms. Rose, um, spoke about, um, the fact that, um, they don't have to adhere to all of the, the SEQA, the normal SEQA requirements, but that was, um, granted to them by the legislature, um, not by this body or any other local body, but by the, by the legislature. So I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. Um, they will, however, be doing a, uh, environmental impact report. And the environmental impact report is, um, people will have a chance to comment on those environmental impact reports, um, in terms of, um, what mitigation measures need to be taken. Everything from vibrations to, to sound, um, as well as just regular, um, public safety, crossing, crossing and all those kind of things will be, that would be, um, in the environmental impact report. So the community will have a, a chance to weigh in on those environmental impact reports because they have to take that report into consideration with the comments before they make a decision on which alternative. Um, obviously, there's another alternative. Alternative is no project, which we have always advocated for, what, like the last ten years, no project. Right? So there's still an, an alternative. Um, but I just wanna be clear that this is not a partnership, um, with, uh, Metro, although as a city, we have, have to do our due diligence to make sure that if the, if the, um, project, um, is approved and it's actually built in the city of Lawndale, that we weigh in, um, heavily, heavily on this project to make sure that all the mitigation measures, um, are in place. And that's why you see us engaged as a city, not that we are partners with, uh, Metro because they have all the authority they need from the legislature to do this project. But we'll continue, of course, to, to be vigilant in, in, um, keeping, um, Metro accountable, especially in terms of making sure they get the information out, um, to the residents. So, so there shouldn't be a case where, where people are not aware of the, uh, Metro. Um, I know, um, we have, depending on what our lives are, what have you, to varying degrees, um, awareness of this project. But this project has been on the, on the, the books for, for a while. They've conducted a lot of meetings. They're gonna do some more tours or what have you. Um, I do encourage, um, residents to get involved because I know a lot of residents that for whatever reason, there was multiple, um, opportunities to tour, but they chose not to tour. Maybe they have enough information. Um, I know, uh, several people that they know all about, about it, and that's why they didn't participate in the tours because they feel that they have enough information on to go on in their views of what they are. Uh, most of them are, you know, in opposition to the project, but their views of what, what they are. But I still think Metro can do a, a better job in making sure that the community is well, um, educated or informed about the project. But I would suggest that just because we have a small amount of people, uh, participating in the walks, that's not indicative of the community at large because, like I said, I know a lot of people, this, they just won't come on a walk because they feel like they've had enough information, I know enough information, including members that, uh, the community live right there by, um, Row. I've had two that told me that, yeah, we knew about the, the, the walk, but I participated in the, the conference calls and all the meetings. And one even, two of them actually went to, was it Pasadena? We went to Pasadena, stuff like that. So they're pretty aware of it, but we gotta keep on, make sure that they, make sure that they, um, inform our residents and our business owners, you know, um, as, as well. So, but once again, this is, we, we want you to weigh in, but please know that this is a legislative, um, um, authority granted, granted to them. You may wanna contact your, your, members of your legislature if you have some problems with them or some concerns, I should say, with, uh, some authorities that's been granted, uh, to Metro. I mean, I mean, I do, especially the, the SEQA, but there's nothing we can do about it now. I mean, as far as I, I know, but who knows? But anyway, we will continue to stay on there. The fireworks, um, real quick, um, yes, we will have that in the, in, in the budget for that additional fireworks suppression, so I'm glad to hear, to hear that. Um, we'll continue working with, um, RJ Construction, and I think that's pretty much it for me. With that, I will close, um, comments from the council, and we will advance the agenda to the consent calendar, which is item G. There's four items on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
May I make a motion to accept as written?
The motion's been made, um, by Kearney that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Quavis. Are there any discussions on the motion? Hearing none, will the council please vote on the consent calendar?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing concerning amendment to the Lawndale Municipal Code to comply with the requirement of Senate Bill, Senate Bill Nine. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and the community. I'm filling in for Ms. Chavez today. She's on vacation, a well-deserved vacation. I'll be brief. Uh, uh, again, this is, uh, this is, uh, another legislative, uh, mandate coming down from Sacramento, and the council's well aware that in recent years, we've been getting numerous, uh, zoning changes through, from the state coming down and enacting, um, at the local level, and this is one of them with SB nine. Um, the, we're proposing an urgency ordinance to address the SB nine. Um, it, it will allow additional urban units and single-family zones. Now, keep in mind, most of Lawndale is comprised of R-two zoning, so we only have about twenty-five percent. That's R-one zoning, which with this would really impact. So it's, SB nine actually has very limited impacts throughout the entire city, but in the R-one zoning, which is mostly located in the north end of the city. So some of the, uh, things that we looked at is, uh, at, you know, second units will be limited to eight hundred square feet. They shall be a minimum size of five hundred square feet, provide for one, uh, garage per unit, and second units, uh, must be affordable and must meet all design standards, so meaning they must be architecturally compatible, so if they come in. Some of the other key elements, um, the following will need to meet in, in the proposed ordinance that you have before you, um, uh, for the subdivision portion of it, because they can subdivide it down. Um, one of the lots must be owner-occupied, so if they subdivide in the R-one lots, which they can under this, the SB nine, um, they have to be owners, so the owner has to live on the property. Similar to the ADU ordinance we passed a few years ago when they had an ADU, the state's outlawed that now, but, uh, you have to have somebody living on the property. This is similar. And then it must have a reciprocal access easement, must be recorded on the property, and the minimum street frontage is forty feet. That's state law. We can, I mean, some of the stuff we could, we try to regulate as much as we can. Uh, this concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions we have this time. Thank you.
Are there any, um, points of clarification, um, from the staff before we open the public hearing? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Um, SB nine did not originally require the affordability part, right? We're adding that part in?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we, we had a little bit of area that we can, uh, maneuver in the SB nine, so, but at very limit. I know, uh, Ms. Chavez and staff are looking at, uh, requiring the fifty-foot size, but the city attorney's office said that we could not do that. We're looking at, kinda like what we did on the ADU ordinance, where we mandated that they can only do ADUs in eight thousand square foot, uh, lots, but then the state responded with, uh, whereas, no, you can't put a lot size. Similar on this too. We can't, whatever our standard is, which is forty in Lawndale, everybody knows that's our standard lot size in general.
And, and I know that was one of the criticisms of it, was that it didn't put in the affordability part, which is what everybody, you know, what the crisis is all about, is affordable housing, so, um, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and again, this is not initiated by the city. This is an urgency ordinance. This is state-mandated, so we're just trying to address those state requirements.
Thank you. I just have, uh, one, one question of clarification. You mentioned, um, homeowner occupied. Is there, um, how long does a owner have to occupy it?
Uh, it's according, they have to be on there permanently. They can't sell it or, or leave the property. It is similar to the ADU requirements too. They have to be on the property for the ADU.
Okay, so at all times, it'll have to be?
Yes, owner occupied.
Occupied, okay. You can't move out in twenty years or ten years.
Yeah, well, that's why they get recorded easement and all that, reciprocal access.
Okay. All right. If there are not any further questions, this is a public hearing, and it is now seven eighteen. I'm gonna declare the public hearing to be open. Are there any wishing to testify on this matter? If you will, just wave your hand. Okay, I don't see any. So at seven eighteen, I'll close the public hearing and bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the council. Any discussion on this item?
I have no questions, um, but I would make the motion. And I did wanna point out, thank you to staff for the affordability part. That was a good one.
Yeah, I, I would echo that, that, um, if, if we have to do it, at least we have an opportunity for affordable, um, housing components. And we do have to do it. All right, so.
I'll second it.
With that, a motion's been made by, um...
Suarez.
By Suarez and seconded by Hoffman Gorman. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask the council to please, please vote.
Item number five passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. This next item is also a public hearing, um, concerning a proposal for a special use permit in a general plan amendment and also a density bonus in a design review concerning ten, um, units. Let's have the staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'll be brief on this item. This item already went before the commission. It's been through the, it was, uh, been through the wringer and back, so, uh, we've been working with this property owner. Um, the property is located one forty-seven, twenty-three, uh, Prairie Avenue on the west side of Prairie, just south of one forty-seventh and between one forty-seventh and one forty-ninth. Um, we've been working with the property owner for about two years on this, uh, to bring a, uh, a ten-unit proposal, apartment building, uh, which also includes a density bonus for two units. They're allowed up to eight, but they applied for a density bonus. They actually were entitled to four, but based on the development standards, commission looked at it, they thought it more appropriate to go with ten units. Um, so eight are allowed by the zoning and density proposed, but, um, they're allowed to, up to two additional units with a density bonus. Um, the proposal before you is to change, uh, there was, there's some inconsistency out there on the properties over the years. Uh, it's designated under the general plan, it's commercial. Some of the existing densities out on the sites, I've been out there many times over the years, um, they have apartment buildings to the south, even to the westerly of that property, high density. Um, I guess years back, the, uh, folks, uh, zoned it R-two, which is not actually consistent. I'm talking about the properties to the south as well, um, that we're also, uh, looking at as well for, uh, designating to R-three. And then some of the, you know, the sites existing with, um, residential uses along Prairie there, not consistent. We don't see that ever being turned to commercial. Also, the other issue we have is if we change the dense, the zoning in general plan there, we have a spot zoning, so we thought to bring all of that into consist, consideration for the council tonight. Um, I mentioned, uh, the use permit, design review. Uh, the use permit is to allow the apartment units there, and then the design reviews for the, uh, three-story apartment units, uh, nicely designed, architecturally enhanced, consistent with the approved residential design guidelines that the council approved a few years ago. Staff's looked at this, uh, project. Um, it meets all the development standards, uh, and SEQA document and mitigated negative decoration was circulated. Uh, no comments were really received on the project, and, um, staff is therefore making no funding for impacts on the, but there are mitigation measures. The special use permit is, is required for con, for, if they decide to do a condominium down the road, and then, as, as I mentioned, it's only ten units. The commission reduced it down from twelve to ten units. Um, the applicant was fine with that because some open space issues and it just didn't think it was overall, it was too dense for the area. It complies with all the parking requirements as well as the building design and site, uh, improvements. Uh, we updated the, uh, resolution. The incorrect resolution was attached to the staff report. We, we sent the new, uh, designation, or resolution to the council today, uh, with the correct resolution number attached to the staff report, twenty-two oh-three dash zero one five. The project has been, uh, is being proposed to be conditionally approved and recommended by staff. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. And the applicant's representative is out in the audience. Um, he expressed to me, he, uh, he's, uh, full approval of all the conditions of approval. That's it.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Oh, the city attorney reminded me because we didn't have, this is the first reading of the ordinance that we, I need to say that, state that into the record.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be back for a second reading as well.
Right. And then, and then just with regard to the ordinance itself, um, just reading in some additional language to include in that first reading, it, it would be section five of the ordinance, which is currently not in the ordinance, would just simply say, "Based upon the foregoing and as described herein, the city council hereby approves the general plan amendment and zone change relative to case number twenty-one dash eighteen." So with that, it's ready for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, um, with that staff report, are there any, um...
Technical question, question of clarification before we open?
Okay, it is now seven twenty-four. The public hearing is now open. Are there any wishing to testify on this matter? Yes, sir. Thank you.
Gary Adams again. Uh, at a previous council meeting, there was two areas of concern that were expressed. I don't know whether they've been addressed or not. The first one is most dear, near to my heart is parking, and it was my understanding that the parking for the bonus units was not specifically designated, and if it's not in the plans, I would request that every parking space be designated as to what unit can use the space. I think this would clear up a lot of, uh, potential frustrations and possible fights and shootings and so forth. Uh, the other major, uh, item that was brought up was that the open space for this project is only four hundred square feet per unit, if I remember correctly. Now, picture, if you will, mom and dad and two children in a space less than what you guys, you folks, are sitting a, as their open space. I don't think that's sufficient. I know it's allowed or believe it's allowed, but it was discussed that this seemed like a very small amount of open space, and I think that should be reconsidered and, uh, request that that is addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none. Okay, it is now 7:25. We're close to public hearing at 7:25. Bring it up to the justice for any discussion on this item. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So my concern also, it has to do with parking. Do we have adequate parking? Is there guest parking on this site?
The applicant, the only reduction in parking was from the size from nine foot by two, from nine by 20 to eight by 20, so a foot. And for the required parking, as provided, as part of the two-density bonus units, it's in the staff report on page five. And they more than meet the, that was a correct question that Mr. Adams brought up. But they addressed their open space requirements. So they, they requested, it's a concession part of the density bonus, it's state law. They can ask for concessions when we give them density bonus. So that's the state requirement as well. A, a reduction in the common open space is required to 2,000 square feet for common open space to 920 feet. The code, the code requires 200 square feet of common open space for, for each unit of 10 units. So they retest the, requested a open space reduction. As part of the concessions, they can do that.
Now, this isn't one of those where the parking is tandem or anything like that, correct?
That is correct, because I always tell the developers, and the city attorney's cover his ears, but I always tell them, hey, we don't like tandem parking here. So they're not doing tandem.
That's good.
And it's not, but by the way, that, I think it's a density bonus thing that we have to allow. But we try to discourage that. We try to get them to do the real part of the two-car garage requirement.
Why are we allowing this to be apartments and condos?
The applicant, they can do apartments or condos. You can't tell people if, I know that 41 units not subject today, but they didn't offer it up as condos, they offered as apartments.
Yep. So, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, Rob. Sean, is this, are they building this where the hedges were too high and they were supposed to have cut it down? Is this that property?
There's a current code case on that property. They're working with the developer, the owner, the current owner, but they would be taking all of that down.
Taking that down, okay.
If, I believe this is all contingent. They're waiting to close escrow. They've been in escrow over a year. And so this, if this gets finalized, then they can close escrow. And then the new property owner would be subject to all those new requirements.
Okay.
Yeah. It's been, just so the council knows, we've been working with the, not the current, the current property owner, but the new one for about two years. And they've revised the project quite a few times to try to meet. We did try to squeeze in more units because of our Rena numbers, but the commission did not, they thought it was too dense. So they reduced it down because of the parking and open space. They thought it was giving too much, but it did pass commission 50.
So it has been approved by planning?
By the planning commission, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Initially, it was, it was sent back to revise the project, and the applicant did so, and they were okay with the 10 units.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're okay with the parking, the 10 units, as well as the, the open space?
Yes, that's the concessions. Those are concessions for the developer.
Okay.
For the, for the density bonus.
Right, because they got a density bonus, yes.
But I do, we do tell applicants, trying to, of course, you know, they can do that, they can apply for the tandem, but we encourage them through development process to go with the two-car garage and the visitor parking as well as required.
Well, I like that this is not tandem parking. That's when you get into the, as the speaker said, did you say shootings? Like I wrote down. That's when you get into, into the shootings, when you have tandem parking. So we can avoid that on this project at least.
All, all the developers in the city that we've dealt with over this last six to seven years know that that's a big concern for the council. Because I think I recall, not bringing up another project, but the concern was the husband or wife coming down and moving the car, if I recall correctly. So we always tell them, I tell staff, make sure you try to design it better to get the two-car garage. And, and almost 99% of the applicants do.
But Sean, we can't deny someone a project if they don't comply with the side-by-side parking, right?
If, if they do a density bonus, I think it's in our density bonus, they can do tandem now. But they know the council's preference and the city's and the commissions and, and staff, so they work with us. The developers have been working with us. But you're right, if they meet the state law, we have to comply.
And the same with the amount of car or parking spaces.
Right, they can actually apply for reduction of that. They just did a foot, it looks like, just a foot.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we all understand that parking is a major thing for us, but we can't deny someone if they don't do tandem, if they don't do side-by-side or less.
But I, you know, on this site too, we looked at it because it is on Prairie, and it's not in the interior of the city, which we would have really had a, if it was on some areas in the residential hard in the centers, we'd have some tough time with them, like trying to design that. So we, you know, it is on Prairie, so it's a little bit more, and it's more compatible for higher density, because it's more, you know, it's a thoroughfare through the city. It's, you know, it's like Hawthorne, it's very busy, heavily traveled.
And I just wanted to add, I'm glad that there's going to be the, the density votes for the low, very low income component of it. So if there's no other questions, I'll make the motion that we approve.
Okay, why don't you make the motion?
I'll second it.
You said you will make the motion.
I said.
Okay, the motion's been made by, by Quavis and seconded by, by Kearney. Okay, yes. I said Bernadette. Actually, I said Quavis, but Suarez, I was just trying to see if he was paying attention. Suarez and a, and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none with the council. Please vote on the motion for item six.
For item six, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number seven, under administration, concerning fireworks audit. And we have one speaker. I do, okay. If you want to speak on this item, you can do so at this time. We'd like to speak on this item. Or are they just waiting?
Mr. Mayor, did you want a staff report?
Yeah, I think they may be, they might be waiting to see how discussions go before they decide what they want to speak about. Let's have a staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. John's off today, he's on a vacation, so I'm going to fill in. So I'll be quick. So as the, you know, the council's asked us to do an audit on 2021 fireworks. You know, pursuant to the Longdale Municipal Code, requires nonprofit organizations to submit for financial information to the city before September 1st each year annually. Staff looked at numerous areas and elements for this little audit. So we, we verified all receipts, verification of all dispersments, verification of beneficiary and nonprofit status, review and check Part A of financial revenue report, and review and check Part B of financial expenditures. So expenditures of what we're bringing in income and what's going on. Staff looked at seven of the organizations that participated in the fireworks program in 2021. The city has reviewed all the financial information revol, from all of those nonprofits, excluding the, the one for the city, the, the fireworks stamp for the city. Six of the seven profit youth-based organizations participated in the sales program as well. Longdale Four Square Church was a new participant in 2021. All are classified under the California Secretary of State as, as non-profits and are in good standing with the Secretary of State. Four, in reviewing six participants out of the seven, four had failed to meet the requirements pursuant to the city's code. Staff looked at spending, you know, they have to spend so much in each area. So one area is how much they've spent. 25% of any net revenue earned from the sale fireworks shall be spent in support of youth activities within the city and in support of activities and/or charitable projects within the city. Four of them were identified, the nonprofits, that were not exactly consistent. We could not get the information from them this year. However, the city council has the authority and discretion to move forward with all of them that have applied, subject to your review and approval. We provided staff recommendations. Staff has to recommend going with, with, with item one, consistent with our zoning code. Of course, the council can decide to move forward at your discretion and move forward with all of them and approve them this year. This concludes staff's report. If there's any questions may have.
Okay, thank you for that report. Are there any discussion on this report? Looking for my opinion. Any discussion?
On whether or not Longdale Four Square is really Longdale Four Square?
They, they did submit some paperwork. I had staff go out and check on them. We didn't, you know, a few times when we went there, some of the doors were not open at the time staff went out there. However, we did, staff did determine that there was some online activity, so they could be doing it online. We're not sure. We're not full investigators, but we did go out investigating, look around and, but we're, you know, they, we have to go off our zoning code, but we took the extra step.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or views on, on the report? There's, there's two options lined out from the staff. There could be a third, if someone has a third, but there's, the staff has two options for us to consider.
Public comments?
Yeah, we do have one person, well, actually two. Anyone want to speak on this comment? Mr. Randall? Is this the same thing? And if anyone else want to speak, I do have your public comments, if you want to speak, just let us know.
Randall Labrum. First of all, I'd like to thank the city manager, along with the finance department, for overseeing long overdue and welcome audits of all nonprofits that sold fireworks for 2021. Since 2017, my fact-checking of the questionable use of these fireworks funds was reported to the, this body and repeatedly fell on deaf ears until now. Over the years, refrain from this body was that cutting off the sale of safe and sane fireworks would be so detrimental to the youth of the community. Now, tonight, the city is discussing how four out of six nonprofits failed the audits as funds were not expended as mandated to benefit, benefit 25% to youth groups with a total of 50% to the community. Additional audit results received today show that out of the four groups failing the audits, two spent 0%, one spent 2%, and one spent only 7% out of the 25% required. The 2019 audit again shows Christian Heritage Church spent $0 on youth activities, while Wesleyan Church again spent only 7% on youth activities. If both failed the audits in 2019, why were both groups allowed to continue? The law is intended to provide rotation and prevention of a monopoly of these qualified groups, but that is not the case. Even one of the groups failed in meeting the requirements. Going back to 2015, years, 2019 and 2021 appear to be the only ones audited. The municipal code states, should an audit reveal that an organization has not used its sales proceeds in the manner required, or that the organization fails to meet the membership requirements, the organization shall be barred from receiving fireworks stamp permit for a period of five years thereafter. Were membership requirements audited as well? Were all organizations organized and established for a minimum of seven years, such as the church you're talking about tonight, the Four Square? The language is legally concise in stating that should an organization fail the audit, it shall be barred from selling fireworks for five years. It doesn't say should or might not be barred, but shall be barred. The section possibly allowing discretion to the council falls under 8.2030, permit issuance policy and guidelines. This section would appear to be in conflict with the section discussing the penalty for failing an audit. There is an established lawful procedure that should be followed, and that includes revocation of a permit by the city manager with an appeal to the city council. Would it be fair to those that abided by the code requirements to have competition from those that failed to comply? Those that are then actually in compliance might see increased revenue. Whenever stopping the sale of safe and sane fireworks is discussed, we are told the money is for the children, for the community. It is obvious that this body does not even know or care how the majority of this money was spent. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Matthew Harbison, pastor of the Longdale Wesleyan Church, as well as a longtime resident here. A couple of questions in relation to some of this is that we discovered that we were not, that this was an item, based on looking at the agenda. We didn't receive any notification to us, whether it be a phone call, email, or mail, saying that the potential of being barred for exit. We, we have no reason. The only reason I am here tonight is because I saw on the agenda that the possibility that my organization is not able to sell fireworks. And so I don't know if the other organizations were able to look, and if that's the case, if they're, we're even here. I can't speak for them. In the past, when asked for receipts and things, members of staff had said that payroll was acceptable. They didn't want to go through perhaps a million receipts of candy or other things, I don't know. And so one of the things that we put down, for an easy one, is some payroll checks. But if, you know, desired, we can go back and we can produce the information that's needed. Speaking a moment ago about memberships and audits, and I understand some of these things with confidentiality and HIPAA, especially when you have children involved, because now we've got, going out to the communities and you're meeting with people. And I think there was an organization years ago when the names were publicized, and people were starting to call these children and say, are you really a part of this? And it became a big harassment issue. So that's, that's in the past. The issue basically that the majority of the fireworks sellers do is we go off of past precedent. And if you tell us this is what you want, we produce that for you. If you want something else, we'll produce that for you. And if we're in error, then we understand that and we want to be compliant. And so our goal for staff is to make this as easy as possible. If they want to know names, if they want to know numbers, if they want to know different receipts, that's fine. If they want to something, say, okay, this is what this is, let's check that box, we're fine with providing whatever that is. And so my, I, I'm basically here to just answer questions, if you have that, and to speak up on behalf of my organization, that we, our, our goal is to serve the community. Our goal is to be present in the community. Our goal is to be there for the children and the youth of the community. That is why we have these fireworks sales. And so if we can do anything about that to help, that's, again, why, why I'm here. And I just would like to encourage you, if you would like us to do new information in the future, give us the one-year recommendation B, and tell us what you would like us to submit, so that next time we can have that information exactly as you would like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to address this to Sean. Is there any way, he just brought up a really good point, is can we have city staff, you, John, look at the application, look at the forms that are, that the nonprofits are using to submit, and make them steel proof so it's easier for them to understand and that they're giving us the right information? I think this is a really good time in which those forms should probably be evaluated too, so that moving forward, it is easier for our nonprofits to provide us the information we're looking for. Is that a possibility?
Yes, ma'am, mayor, mayor of town and council, that's certainly we can do that. And as I mentioned a few weeks ago, maybe this is something the council consider, you have the discretion to absolutely move this forward, if you so desire, all the groups that applied, and move it forward. But the following year, that staff sit down with the applicants, do some outreach and some education. Because I mentioned in the staff report, what John reported was he couldn't get all the information based on the audit timeline. So maybe they have all that information, we just could not get it for, for the direction at this time. But maybe given the short timeframe, because July is coming up, or coming up on that July date, absolutely the council could, it's up to your discretion at this time to move forward with the audit, accept it as it is, and then the following year, work with all the nonprofits, get the forms updated, tell them the information they need, everything we need. We do that once a year, meaning when they apply, so we can bring all this. But before even then, we can sit down with them and go over everything with them too, and update the forms.
Yes, ma'am.
Were the four organizations that did not have the proper documentation informed of today's meeting?
I don't know if they were directly informed. I know John reached out to each organization requesting the information for the direction of the council.
Thank you.
It's not like a public hearing requirement that we noticed them, but we did reach out to them, getting the information. Some of the information, they just didn't have. They may have it, but they couldn't provide it in the time and manner that we needed it for the, for the council.
Yes, sir.
And I, for one, would like to see the application. I'm, you know, I, part of me kind of wonders if some of the organizations were able to provide it and have been diligently documenting that. You know, it, it's kind of not fair for them to, if they've been complying with the, the requirements for it. And so that's my hesitation with, you know, it seems like it was a pretty straightforward requirement based off of our other approvals, and I guess that's my hesitation. And I would like to see what the application states, but you know, there's, well, I guess two that have been complying with it, so seems like they're aware, but the other ones aren't. So I guess that's where I'm, I'm kind of confused, is how, is it apparent for some? I mean, Little League, I know they solely, you know, that's how the organization caters to is the youth. But the Rotary Club, I know specifically, having volunteered at some of those booths and, and knowing the organization that they do give funds to. So I guess that's my reservation with kind of just automatically going to the second option.
If the application is the same as when I was in Little League 12, 13 years ago, and it hasn't changed, it doesn't specifically tell you what you need to turn in. You just have to present your sales and your expenses.
And Mr. Mayor and council, in all fairness too, I don't think the city was doing its due diligence, watching it closely. We were just working with the organizations too, so I have to put that out there.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Rhonda, the rest of the ladies here. We should, I mean, they violated some stuff, but I think we already stuck our foot in our mouth when we decided that these seven were eligible. I think we should move forward with it. Okay, these seven, and like Rhonda said, bring each group in, one at a time, tell them this is where you messed up, this is where you're correct, and we have to take a look at our application. And probably, because I know back before Shirley was born, I was president of Little League, and it's the same application back in the eighties that it is today.
I did verify it is the same app, application.
So, so just for clarification purposes, they just were not able to produce it at the time requested?
In, in the staff report, John requested information. We didn't get everything that we needed, some of them, but we got some documentation. But you know, he was calling around trying to get all the documentation, just that, in all fairness, our, we have been doing our due diligence on our side as well, on the finance department. So, over the years, it just...
No, and I agree on that point as well.
So that, that's in all fairness to the nonprofits too.
And I know one of the groups here made money on their fireworks booth and only spent under a hundred dollars for, I guess it was youth activities, and that's way below what they're supposed to spend. So, I mean, this group's been around for a long time, so it was our error, we didn't catch it. But next year, if they repeat, then we say you're not eligible for five years if they do it again.
Yeah, I would say, thank, thank you for those comments. I would say that, that anytime the, in most cases, anytime that it's the fault of the, the government or body, you should err on, on the, all things being equal, on the side of the applicant. That's in principle, that's how I govern, because it is up to us to make sure we do, do our due diligence, and it seemed like that hadn't been done for last year, whatever, I don't know, because of the pandemic or whatever it was, whatever the reason for it was. And I think because of that, we can't really, we can't really penalize the applicants. Because I don't, at this point, I'm not convinced that whether or not it was just a matter of timing, that they would have the, the documentation if they had enough time, or they simply don't have the documentation because it was not impressed upon them that these documentations should be readily available for when we do the audits. In either case, I don't think it would be advantageous for this body to penalize them. I would say moving forward, though, everyone should be on notice, all of the, not just the seven, but all the groups that has participated in the past, and that would more than likely would probably throw their, their hat in the ring for a booth next year or the years to come. All of them should be on notice as to what are the requirements and what are the expectations, as well as the documentation proving that you have made, you have met the requirements. And of course, the staff should definitely follow up and make sure in a timely manner that these audits are conducted to the fullest and, and not be in a position where they're up against the clock. Because if I'm a nonprofit or any entity, and, and I know the clock is running out and I don't have the documentation for whatever reason, I just maybe just let the clock run out and, and hope that, you know, you err on, on my side because the time ran out because you got the notices out, or you start the process late or what have you. But we can avoid that if we start them on time and do our due diligence. So that's my thoughts on it. It does give us some, some discretion, from what I understand, that we do have discretion, although it, it does say that, I know someone pointed out that it said shell, but I'm reading here where it says that we have the absolute discretion in this matter. And I think this is a time to, we exercise those discretion, so I would be okay with that.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, John cited, I mentioned Mr. Abrams, and he is asking about this. He cited the general zoning code section over all the fireworks applications, but the actual code is 812.030. We have that discretion.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And with that...
I have one more comment. If we do the application review, make sure we put on there that it has to be a viable nonprofit, not entitled only, that they actually are out there doing something. I know the churches do stuff, I know Little League does stuff, I know Rotary does stuff. There's a couple on there I have question, questionable concerns about, but I want, not just on paper, it has to be a legitimate nonprofit operating and that application.
Okay. We'll make sure we, we reach out to all of the nonprofits and we educate them and all the requirements, and then we update the application as well.
Okay.
Very good. Yes, ma'am.
One last thing. Are you able to send a email or a letter to these seven organizations and let them know what we expect within 30 days after July 4th, so that they could be considered for next year if they apply?
We can certainly do that. I think the audit, they have them by September, but we can send them a letter and let them know after the, you know, after they get situated after the Fourth of July. Yeah, we certainly can do, send a letter and let them know. We, we plan on bringing them in and meeting with them. Call in a meeting, bring them into the, into the chambers here and go over all the requirements so they're, they understand.
But I think we should send them hopefully a letter within the next couple of weeks, letting them know, this is what we are requiring in order for you to get a permit next year.
Definitely, most definitely.
So that they could start putting all their paperwork together.
Sounds good, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so what is the, the pleasure of this body concerning this item? Which item is this?
Item seven. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion, there we go with option number two. Staff report.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Kearney that we go with the staff recommendation, option number two, granting the fireworks stands to the seven organizations as enumerated here, in the second by Mayor Pro-TM Hoffman-Gorman. Are there any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number seven, the motion passes with four yeses and one abstention from council member Cuevas.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is... Item number eight is a 20...
All right. It'd be fast, Mr. Mayor. I'll just, it's the similar issue, same findings, and the same, similar same actions. It's up to the discretion of the council.
Okay.
I won't belabor it, we've already discussed it in the previous item, same issue though.
Okay. Okay, what is the body concerned, I mean, the pleasure of this body concerning item eight?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay. And the motion is probably two, or the conditional permit? Probably number two, right?
Um, mirroring seven.
Okay. So the motion's been made by Suarez that we approve the council recommendation, I mean, staff recommendation number two, award the seven conditional permits, right? That's wrong?
Correct.
And seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? See enough, the council please vote.
For item number eight, the motion passes with four yeses and one abstention from council member Cuevas.
Thank you, madam. Item nine, approval of the funding agreement, including a project readiness certificate for the Redondo Beach Boulevard project.
The Public Works Director, Mr. Mayor, is going to get the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
And with the council, this is Julian, the director of Public Works. This evening, staff would like to request for approval of funding agreement, including the project readiness certification for the Redondo Beach Boulevard improvement project. As part of 2015 call for project, the city has received, received approval from the funding system from the metro for the reconstruction of Redondo Beach Boulevard, from Artigia Boulevard to the Prairie Avenue. Since the initial 2015 application, there were a few revisions to the scope of work, and the metro has approved the revised scope of work portion, uh, scope work on the Redondo Beach Boulevard project in July 2021, and also provided the city with a funding agreement in February of 2022. To move forward with this project, the city, the metro has requested the city to submit the project readiness certification, which is part of the, the funding agreement. So with that, staff recommend the city council to approve the funding agreement, including the project readiness certification for the Redondo Beach Improvement Project. The staff has no further questions.
Okay, very good. Are there any discussion on the staff report on item nine?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't the Galleria supposed to, if they went for the project, give the city some money on that? On the Redondo Beach project?
It wasn't a, it wasn't, it had to be across the, I checked with Julian on that, and this is not impacting that agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can't use that money? We can, we can use that money if we needed to?
They haven't pulled any building permits yet from the Galleria yet, or the agreement. It's stalled.
Well, we're going to get our, when they do, we're going to get our...
Yeah, we, we get it either way. Either the project stalled, I think they don't want to have to pay us the $2 million.
$2 million, yeah. Because, yeah, we, we worked out that agreement, we, we're looking forward to the $2 million. But anyway, that's a different subject. Go ahead, so you okay?
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion on this item?
No. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll motion to approve the funding agreement.
Okay, the motion's been made by Cuevas that we approve the funding agreement?
I'll second it.
And seconded by Suarez?
Suarez, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any discussion on the motions? See enough, the council please vote.
For item number nine, motion passes unanimously.
Sorry, Erica.
All right. Thank you. All right, next item, item number 10 is approval of plans and specifications for a citywide sign replacement project.
Mr. Julian Lee's going to handle that.
Mr. Lee.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, and with the council. The item before you is a staff request to afford the approval of the plans specification for fiscal year 2021 and '22 citywide sign replacement project. Back in July 2020, city entered into agreement with Caltrans to perform a study of the local roadway safety plan by a consultant named Terrence. The, one of the work that's part of the study is to evaluate the integrity of the, the street signs throughout the cities and to be in compliance, because consultants have identified about 1,000 signs and about 500, excuse me, posts that are need to be replaced right away. And in addition, last month, last month, metro also informed the city that there is about $1.3 million in Prop C that needs, that will be lapsing in June of 2022. So because of the additional funding that we got on the previous item, which is the Redondo Beach Boulevard projects, that there was about $1.6 million that we were going to use as part of the Prop C, now that needs to be used somewhere else. So this project, even though it was not part of the original CIP at the beginning of the year, that we would like to propose to, to conduct this fiscal year so that we could use the Prop C fund before, before lapsing. Let's see. So with that, staff recommends city council to approve the plans and specification for the fiscal year '21, '22 citywide sign replacement projects. The staff has very few questions.
Okay, thank you for that report, Mr. Lee. Are there any discussions on this item?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Measure M, is that also expiring then, this year?
No, it's not. However, the, the city signs that we need to replace are within the Prop C zone, and also the, there are some that are not in the Prop C zone, so we are using the Measure M for that, for the location. And from what we know, that we also have gotten a grant for this particular project. So initially, we will be using the Measure M fund, and eventually we'll transfer it with the grant fund that, that we've gotten from, for the local road safety grants that, that we have gotten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if no one else has any questions, I'll motion to approve this.
Are there any further questions?
I have one question. Does this also going to replace the, the posts, or is it just the signs?
Yes, there's going to be about 500 posts that we'll be replacing.
Okay.
There's approximately 5,000 signs throughout the city. This will, this will replace only about 20% of it. So next year, we'll still need to replace, probably not 1,000, but still, we need to replace these signs eventually. I'm hoping to be replacing all the signs within 10 years so that they're in compliance.
I have a quick question. So the signs that are, are to be replaced, are those the street signs, like a hundred and whatever, whatever streets?
Most of the signs that we're replacing are, for example, no parking signs, a lot of signs, no, no stopping, no stopping due to the street cleaning. A lot of those signs are faded throughout the, throughout the city, and also a lot of the poles are corroded. So those are, the urgent replacement is what we are asking right now.
Okay. Will they have graffiti protection on them, or how does that work?
All of them.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll, I'll motion.
Okay, so the motion's being made by Cuevas that we approve the staff report?
I'll second it.
And seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Are there any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item 10, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 11 is concerning the general plan and annual progress report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Every year, this, the Community Development Department, Planning Division specifically is required to submit a general plan progress report. It's mandated by the Housing and Community Development from the state, the Department of State of California. The city has nine man, you have nine, seven mandatory elements and two additional. We have economic and air quality, and we report those annual findings of the progress of the, of the city's general plan. Happy to report from the Community Development Department, there were 1,510 recorded counter visits in community development, 138 site plans were, were reviewed, 140 residential property reports, I know the council gets calls on those all the time, 680... I know the council gets calls on those all the time. 682 building permits were issued. It's quite a bit of activity. New density bonus ordinance was adopted. New businesses were opened throughout the city. As the council knows, you've been to the, the Lot, the Fairfield Brewery, we all, we were all there. The UPS store, the Pine Way Cloud Kitchen. And a pending is, uh, we have a fried chicken fast food restaurant coming, as well, the old, um, the Del Taco that's being converted, and then an ice cream shop, you know, that are still underway. Some of the revisions that we've mentioned, the commission requests that make recommendations to implement the general plan was complete revision, modernization of the zoning code, which we're gonna do as part of the general plan update. Update the general plan, which we're currently doing. Update the Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan, my favorite, we're doing that as well. Update the housing element, which we have, we've done that. Increase incentives for commercial residential lot mergers. That's all part of our general plan. We're working on those. We've adopted secret guidelines, so happy to report we're moving forward in the city. The commission approved recommending approval, and staff recommends approval, directing staff to send this, uh, to our friends at the state of California.
Very good. Thank you for that report. Are there any discussion on the report?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
Also, Sean, I might have forgot about the Sweet Fend opened up in that kiosk down on 162nd. Little restaurants, but takeout only.
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that was the commercial Cloud Kitchen. That's how we refer to it.
And Cracker Barrel opened up recently.
Oh, inside there, yeah, the little.
Cracker Barrel?
Well.
Inside?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they, that little Cloud Kitchen will have name brands in there as well. We just didn't highlight all of the, I requested the Benihana, my favorite, but they said that's not happening. So.
So they're, so they're open now?
They, I don't know if they're open yet. They're still working on their TIs.
It's by a delivery service only right now.
Yeah, delivery. So they, out of there, they do, it's a unique proposal. That's why we went with it, cause we're reusing those furniture stores down there. They're hard to park, but given that, that the type of use and stuff, we work with them to get in there. It was, uh, it was a lot of work with staff, working with them, and, um, we got them in, but they do have different use, up to 31 types of kitchens in there.
If you drive down, you'll see a giant chicken car parked in that chicken kiosk over there.
That's correct.
And they're on DoorDash, too.
Yeah.
The chicken is good.
So how is the crackers?
Yeah, I mean, I saw that on Cracker Barrel.
Yeah.
I didn't think we had, I mean, you know how far we go to go to a Cracker Barrel?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. There, there's one in Rialto.
There's one in Lakewood. Very good. Any, any further discussion on this item?
If I recommend the staff recommendation to approve the project with the attachments, A, B, C, and D.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Kearney that we approve the staff recommendations, and it's seconded by, what's her name again? Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote on item 11.
For item number 11, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item 12, Proposition A funding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'll be quick. This is the, the council asked the staff to provide some updates on the Proposition A programs. They're funded by half-cent sales tax measures by Los Angeles County voters, approved for transit development-type projects. And the California voters voted that in in 1980. The collection of those taxes began on July 1st, 1982. 25% of the Proposition A taxes designate for local return program funds to use by cities and counties in developing and improving public transit, paratransit, and related transportation infrastructure. On page two of your staff report, we provided a list eligible uses for Prop A and Prop C funds. There's a list of them, one through 16, and exclusive use for Prop A funds, which don't include Props C funds. They provide signal, securitization, fund exchange, transportation demand management, meaning, meaning, um, in land use terms, that's reducing your, your, you know, allowing a flexible work schedule, which the city does, a 4-10 schedule. Encouraging carpooling wherever possible. I carpool sometimes with Public Works gentlemen. That's, we have that way, so sometimes that happens. So those are the kind of strategies that are encouraged, reducing those types of strategies, which we already employ. But these Prop A funds are allowed for those, as well as, you know, bus stop improvements and maintenance, pair, uh, public transit, transit security, transit marketing, parking ride lots, all these things. Rightaway improvements, commuter rail, well, we don't, that's really not something. And then capital reserves and administration. So that's the update for the council.
Okay, thank you.
And it's receiving file.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
A quick question. Under others, could we go a trash can next to number 16 that says other? Could a trash can next to the bus stop be part of other?
I, it could be, cause it does say, I mean, we'd have to look into that, but it says bus stop improvements and maintenance. So that could fall under, you know, bus stops do come with trash receptacles, so that's something, if you integrate it into the bus stop, I'm, I'm sure we can make that work.
Cause there's a few of the stops that don't have anywhere to throw their trash in. They throw it on the planters or on, on the sidewalk.
Right.
It would be nice to have.
That's something we can look at and get back to you on that. I don't know if that's something definitely we wanna look at.
But it, it has nothing to do with the upkeep of our bus stations or the areas steam cleaning the concrete around it and that kind of thing.
I, it's limited, yeah. The Prop A and Prop C funds, they're just maintenance.
So there wouldn't be maintenance if you steam cleaned around?
I, well, I'd have to get back to you, cause I know there's some fine lines and some what we can do. It's maintenance of the bus stop facilities, improvements. I'd have to go into definitions and look for sure. Clarify on that, but we can get back to the council on that.
Yeah, some of those stops definitely need steam cleaning.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about, um? Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We definitely could look at, into that. If, if it's possible, we'll use those funds for that.
So how, what are we doing in a way of subsidizing the fares? Is this for, like, employees?
I'd be like, like the Longdale Beat. If you want to subsidize fares, like metro subsidize a lot of their fares. They don't collect, you know, I don't know what their ratio is, but it's not at the fare box. It's really low.
Do we subsidize our, our fixed route?
We, I can look in that, talk to Mike, and see if we can apply those funds, their fixed route services. Yeah.
Maybe for seniors and students?
We can look into that, yes. That's something we can look into.
So how much is the fare? If the fare is, like, rock bottom already?
We don't charge them. I think it's 25 cents. For the, the beat? The Longdale Beat?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think seniors are 25, and I think everybody else is 50.
The last I heard, I believe that's around there.
I don't think you can get any lower than that. Yeah, 25 and 50, so, so maybe not so.
Just so the council knows, you know, most mass transit or transit agencies, they don't, they don't maintain their fare recovery. It's very limited. Small amount. I think it's 25%.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so that would be the report. And this is a receiving file, um, item. Without objection, we will receive and file this item. The next item is items from the mayor and council members. Let's hear from Mr. Pat Kearney.
I just attended one meeting. It was a lobby trust and oversight committee for the JPIA to oversee the sheriff's contracts in liability. That was on March 9th. I pass it on to whoever's.
Suarez, whatever. Suarez and Quavis.
Okay, so I don't have anything to report as far as attendance, but I do have an announcement. There's the 22nd General Assembly this Thursday, March 24th, for the South Bay Cities Council of Government, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, um, at the Juanita Melinda McDonald Community Center in Carson. So there will be panel discussions and all that, and, uh, just generally speaking, what the COG has been up to. And then I did want to, um, let staff know, and I don't know if we can reach out to the new gardens that are on Marine and Freeman. They're having some kind of an opening, I believe it's the first weekend in April. So perhaps we can do some type of ribbon cutting event for them, um, just to add to the list, since I know we have a couple more, but I know they are doing a, uh, event for the community, and everybody's welcome, and they're gonna have events for kids and all, so perhaps we can reach out to them for that.
That's, uh, the nursery?
The nursery, yes. And I'll pass it along. Thank you.
Councilwoman Quavis?
I was, I attended a forum, a SCAG forum with LA County District Attorney George Duskon on the 16th. It was informative, but it wasn't what I was looking for. Some of his answers were a little vague, um, but it was interesting. And one thing to staff, could we put a battery on that clock? I've been looking at it, and I've been seeing.
We'll, we'll take care of that.
Somewhere at the right time.
I'm all I say.
Is that it?
That's it, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one meeting that I attended, and that was with the Metro C line, and that was on the 8th. And as I stated earlier, basically that meeting, they came in with a presentation, and before they got going with their presentation, I jumped in and asked them if we could do a critiquing of the whole events of what I had heard out in the neighborhood in regards to the walks, um, both positive and negative. And we also discussed about how, um, our walk was attended by very few of the Longdale residents, but felt like that it was advertised more broadly than in our city. That took, we only meet for about an hour and 15 minutes, and trust me, I think Sean can say that every minute that we were on it was about critiquing the frustrations of what we're hearing out on the streets. I don't know if you have anything to add on to it during your time, but that's, that's what I wanted to report back to the council. I look forward to the next meeting. I think that we were heard. They didn't like part of the things that we said, but we were heard. I also wanna remind the residents that this week is cleanup week. Pretty important week around here, considering we get so much useless debris on our street that we have to keep asking for Public Works to come out and remove. It's a good time. Clean out that garage, throw that item away. Let's make Longdale look better. And lastly, I have a question, uh, and it's about an event that happened today up on 170th. I got a phone call early this morning from a resident who had two coyotes at her front door at about 5 o'clock this morning, and of course, her neighbors had called her and woke her up because it was in, the coyotes were in the process of eating a cat. And she was hoping, and the neighbor was concerned, that it was that resident's cat. So I would like for Michael to give us a little bit of information on what he can share with us, on what we can and cannot do in regards to coyotes.
And I do have, just to follow up, the COG does have a coyote task force, and they're looking at Torrance, and, um, I believe it's Rancho's Palace Fair Days. They're, they're starting to look at implementing some type of a plan. It was in the early stages, so we might wanna see exactly what they're doing, or reach out and see what they've done.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Protem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you tonight. As for the attack for the coyotes on, on the, uh, the cat this morning, I'm aware of that as well. I spoke to staff after, um, after they handled the, uh, the, well, after they picked up the carcass, basically. We do not have a, a extensive coyote plan here. I can go ahead and draft one. I did draft one at my previous employer. We don't have a big coyote problem here, though. We, we really only get about a few calls about coyotes a year. However, uh, in my experience dealing with coyotes, um, coyotes are somewhat protected because they are wildlife. You're not allowed to trap coyotes, and if you do, you have, like all wildlife, they have to be released. There's a number of reasons they cannot be transported. Uh, one of the main things is that coyotes are pack animals, so if you take them from their pack and try to find somewhere to put them, they're likely to starve to death or die by other coyotes who already populate that area. Secondly, um, coyotes do have unique parasites in, in that animal, so just like any animal, if you're taking it away from where its natural habitat is and taking it to some other area, you're transferring those parasites as well into another environment. And lastly, there's, there, you know, there's no one that wants our coyotes, just like we don't want anybody else's coyotes, so that's basically why we can't transport them. Um, they, they can be, yeah, yeah. They can be trapped legally, though. There is some controversy with that, though. Uh, there are a number of animal rights groups that don't wanna see coyotes put down. But the plan that I worked on prior did have numerous elevating options up to, including lethal options. So I can, I can present some to the council, and we can adopt it into our animal control program for coyotes. Like I said, we don't have a lot of coyote calls. Um, I, I can say in the, the research I've done, there are more coyotes now than there's ever been in the history of the world. There's also more people than there's ever been in the history of the world, and of course, our two environments are gonna collide, and eventually we are gonna reach a critical point at which we're gonna have to take more aggressive actions with coyotes. Happily, we're not at that point yet, but we can certainly, I can certainly provide something, uh, to the council for information on how coyotes are, are dealt with now. I did speak to a, um, coyote, or animal patrol in Lakeland, Colorado, a few years ago. They had a very interesting plan in which they actually had their officers, uh, they would blow a whistle whenever they encountered a coyote, and they would shoot it with a, a paintball gun. So it's non-lethal, uh, would mark the coyotes, but it also trained the coyotes to stay away from populated areas. Being in an urban environment, that'd be a little tougher for us, cause we don't wanna miss the coyote and hit the Lexus, so that's kind of, but, uh, but I can certainly present something for, for the council, and I, I do have a lot of information about coyotes, because we did do regular workshops at my prior employer.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will say this, Michael. I do watch the Nextdoor app, and probably for the last year, maybe two, I am seeing an increase, people videoing them. And of course, they're always out late at night is when they're running the neighborhoods. But I appreciate the information from you. So if a resident then is having a problem, contact City Hall?
Yeah, they, they still contact us. I mean, we, we do, we do deal with them, and we'll, we'll, our immediate response is we would haze them. Uh, we make a lot of noise, scare them away. Uh, animals are part of the canine family, so they can be trained like dogs. They'll, they will, with the example of paint pellets, um, that does teach the coyotes to stay away from those areas. They do learn, hey, every time I come here, there's a whistle, and then I get shot.
Plus, they probably don't appreciate being in, like fluorescent orange.
Yeah. That's just, correct, correct, so. But I can certainly get more information to the council on, on coyotes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, um, I think it was last, last summer, I was right outside of, um, Longdale on the, the walk path in, uh, Redondo Beach, right there, and one flew right by me. At first, I couldn't believe what I saw. Like, that was like a dog, but it was like really weird. I'm like, that's not a dog. And of course, the animal control, and I think someone from the county was trying to capture it, and it was evading arrest. You know, it was, they could not capture it. Um, so you're saying there's no coyote dumping allowed?
There's no coyote dumping allowed.
Okay, no coyote dumping allowed. All right, that's good to know. So I attended one meeting that was a sanitation district, just a regular meeting of the sanitation, LA County Sanitation District. No real, um, reportable actions there, um, past meeting, but I do have one, um, request, um, a traffic request that we take a look at. On 166, um, in Inglewood Avenue, going east into Longdale, of course, a neighbor is requesting a, a turn, a green light arrow to allow you to clear the, clear the, um, intersection and turn left into the, into the community, which left would be me going east. Which is really ironic, like, I don't know why I didn't think of that, because I was sharing with the, with, with the neighbor, it's really dangerous turning left there. So what I've done in the past, what, what, 15 years, purposely, I would have to sit there until the light turned red. And then when the lights turn red, hoping Redondo Beach is, is not looking, right, cause they patrol that area, then I'll turn left. Because if you try to turn when that light is green, and you have the right of way, even though you have the right of way, and it's plenty of time for the opposing, um, traffic, you know, to stop and, uh, yield to you, that almost never happens. So you have to literally sit there until it turn red, and it forces you, for safety's sake, forces you to run the red light, you know, to safely, um, enter and, um, into the community. Meanwhile, the person behind you, they just get stuck for another cycle, right, because only one of us will be able to, to turn at the red light. So if we can look into that to see if it. Um, so if we can look into that to see if, if, if that's feasible to put, um, an arrow there to allow us to clear, like I say, I do that every day in fifteen years and it never dawned on me that we needed perhaps a, um, an arrow there until a neighbor, um, asked about it. So if we can look into that. And by the way, that's one of our hottest spots for, um, accidents, too. You'll, you'll find that when you look into it, because people go down Inglewood Avenue at fifty miles an hour for some reason. Who knows why? Yes, ma'am.
The last thing I wanted to remind those that are watching, on Wednesday, the thirtieth, from three PM to four PM at Starbucks, we're having coffee with the cops. And I'd sure enjoy if our residents can come and meet with our sheriffs, meet with our community safety and become more active. Let's, let's talk to these entities about the problems that we're having in our community. Uh, just today, I had a resident stop me about these little mini bikes that are flying through the neighborhood with no helmets on and these are concerns. That's where we start getting things done, is when we meet as a group and let our, our voices hear, not just, not just sit at home and be frustrated. So come out to Starbucks and, and let's speak to the sheriffs regarding some of our issues.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, with regards to Rhonda's, uh, comment about, uh, coffee with the cop, is it possible to do one later in the evening? A lot of our citizens work until five, five-thirty, um, and they might want to go and, you know, have a coffee with them or whatever.
Saturday.
Sure.
Or, or, or I know, on a weekend, um, when there's citizens that could attend?
Yeah, uh, last year, the, the council did budget for, uh, quarterly events, so the last one we had, we actually had in the morning, uh, the next one we probably have in the evening, uh, and then the, the fourth one of the year is, uh, national night out. So, but yeah, we, we try to space them out so that every, every group can get to either the morning, afternoon, or evenings. So, yeah, and, and again, that is, uh, the, Wednesday, the thirtieth, as, as the mayor Protem said, uh, is complimentary coffee and, and refreshments for, for all residents, everyone is welcome and we do encourage everyone to come out. We do have some raffle prizes as well for, uh, encouraging people to sign up for the Neighborhood Watch Program.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we do have one, um, other, um, piece of business and that's a closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to read the provision of the closed session for which we will govern ourselves under.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this evening, we would recuse to recess in the closed session, um, for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations under government code five four nine five seven point six.
Closed session, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there is no report required to be made from the closed session this evening.
Thank you, sir, for that. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, April fourth, in the Longdale City Council chambers. It is now eight forty-six and this meeting is adjourned.